I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Would the clerk please take roll?
Jerry DeTulio.
Here.
Daniel Gravy.
Here.
Patrick Quinn.
Here.
Daniel Larson.
Here.
Janet Leo. Jonathan Shelkey, Christine Disney, and Will Kearns are absent tonight.
Thank you. Are there any changes to the order of the agenda tonight from the staff or commission? Seeing none, the agenda will stand as published. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of September twenty first, two thousand twenty three?
Mr. Chairman, so moved.
Is there a second? Second, we'll have to abstain. We have a motion for approval seconded by Commissioner Leo. Please poll the commission.
Sorry, try it again. There we go. Motion approved, four to zero with one abstaining.
Thank you. Before we continue on, I'd like to welcome Dan Greavy, our new Planning Commission member from District Two. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm happy to be here. I look forward to serving on the commission.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the public forum. This item, this time is for any person to speak on any subject not on peering on the agenda. Public comments may be limited to three minutes. Do we have anybody in the council chambers to speak? Seeing none, do we have any on Zoom?
There might be one if you are on Zoom and you'd wish to speak, please raise your hand. Nobody at this time.
Thank you. So the next item on the agenda is public hearings. What we'll do is we'll swear everybody in for all the public hearings. Please stand and raise your right hand if you're going to speak tonight. Do you swear to tell the truth in this matter? Say, "I do." "I do." Thank you. First item on the agenda is seven A. Commissioner Larson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tonight we are considering case number WZ dash two-two-dash-zero-seven. It's an application for approval of a specific development plan for the purpose of developing a tree service business to include a five thousand forty square foot structure to accommodate office, warehouse, woodworking, and retail spaces. The site also includes outdoor storage and display of landscaping materials. The subject site is located on the west side of Robb Street between I seventy Frontage Road North and approximately West Fiftieth Avenue at four-eight-seven-seven Robb Street.
Thank you. I'm going to open the public hearing and we'll take our staff application, our staff presentation.
Thank you, Commissioner. Good evening, planning commissioners. My name is Stephanie Stevens and I am a planner in the City of Wheat Ridge Community Development Department. I'm presenting case number WZ twenty-two oh seven, which is a request for approval of a specific development plan for the purpose of developing a tree service business to include a five thousand and forty square foot structure that accommodates an office, warehouse, woodworking, and retail shop use at four-eight-seven-seven Robb Street. I would like to enter into the record the contents of the case file, the zoning ordinance, the comprehensive plan, and this digital presentation. The property is within the City of Wheat Ridge. All appropriate notification and posting requirements have been met, and therefore, Planning Commission has jurisdiction to hear this case. The property is located on the west side of Robb Street between I seventy Frontage Road North and approximately West Fiftieth Avenue at four-eight-seven-seven Robb. The property consists of two unplatted parcels of land that are in the process of being combined into one lot, and the property measures approximately three point four acres in area. It's presently vacant, unimproved land. Both the Wadsworth and Swadley ditches run through this site with a significant grade change in the northwest corner. The Wadsworth ditch was recently piped underground, and Swadley ditch is expected to remain as an open channel. The property is zoned, oops, sorry about that. Property is zoned planned commercial development, and the properties to the north are zoned agricultural one. To the south is the Wheat Ridge Industrial Park, zoned planned industrial development, and to the east, properties are zoned planned industrial development, planned commercial development, and Ag One. To the west, properties are zoned planned commercial development and industrial employment. Most of the surrounding uses are commercial and light industrial in nature, but there are three single-unit homes contained in the Ag properties to the north. Re-zoning to a planned development in the City of Wheat Ridge involves a two-step process. The first is the outline development plan, which establishes the zoning and was approved in two thousand twenty-two for this site. The second step is the approval of the specific development plan, which we're here to present to you tonight and focuses on the specific details of a development, such as drainage, architecture, lot layouts, specific building location, and building orientation. The purpose of the request tonight is to allow for the development of the tree service business while preserving natural features on the site that exists today. Planning Commission is the final approval body for the specific development plan. The primary uses being sought include the five thousand and forty square foot office and warehouse, shop building, and reserved outdoor areas for storage, nursery, and display to accommodate the tree service business. In the next few slides, I'll discuss the primary elements of the site that are listed on the screen. Starting with allowable uses, sorry about that. Starting with allowable uses, the ODP is shown on the screen here, and it depicts the site broken up into three distinct planning areas, transitioning from most intensive along the southeast to least intensive to the northwest. The three planning areas with the proposed uses are summarized broadly as follows. Planning Area One is located in the southeast portion of the site along Robb Street and will contain the commercial uses that support the business operations, including the building, which will contain the office, warehouse, woodworking, and retail uses, and major improvements such as parking and detention. Planning Area Two, in the middle of the site between the two ditches, is proposed to be reserved for screened landscape material, storage, nursery plantings, and display. Planning Area Three is to the northwest of the site, next to the adjacent agricultural one property, and is to be preserved mostly in its natural state with a reserved area for screened outdoor storage of natural materials only. The tree service business is the same applicant that applied for the outline development plan, and it is consistent with the outline development plan and allowed uses. Here is the specific development plan of Planning Area One along Robb Street. The building is oriented along Robb with primary parking in front of the building. Access to the development will come from two access points along Robb Street with full movement at the southern access point, and the northern access point will be limited to one way out. Improvements along the frontage include curb gutter and a five-foot attached sidewalk, which will be constructed in accordance with the outline development plan. A total of twelve parking spaces are proposed for the office and warehouse use, including one van accessible space. The primary parking area along Robb Street will be paved with asphalt, and areas to the side and rear of the building will utilize confined compacted road base, which is allowed by the ODP and is appropriate given the more agrarian character of the area, and it reduces overall impervious area. Detention is accommodated for in a pond to the rear of the building. The proposed site design complies with development standards of the ODP pertaining to setbacks, height, coverage, access, and parking. Traffic and drainage have also been reviewed by Engineering Saff. Sorry, technical difficulty here. Not sure if I'm sharing. Okay, I'll keep going here. All right, this slide shows the proposed landscaping and areas to be used for storage in orange. The site is, at a minimum, will be sixty-two percent landscaped. New landscaping is proposed in Planning Area One, as shown in green on the screen, and the remainder of the site will be maintained as native plantings as it is today. Planning Area Two is the middle planning area and to be used for nursery and display and landscape storage. Planning Area Three to the west is to be used for outdoor storage of natural materials such as tree storage, mulch, and drying wood slabs. All areas containing storage will be screened by opaque fencing and landscaping. Ten-foot landscape buffers are provided along Robb Street to screen parking and the northern property line adjacent to the agricultural one zoned property in accordance with the ODP. The ditches are being preserved as wildlife corridors in compliance with the ODP, and some of the existing landscaping, including mature, healthy trees along the ditches and the west property line, are being used to count towards screening and buffering requirements. Here are the west and east elevations. The east elevation on the top of the screen shows the primary entry, which will be visible from Robb Street. The ODP requires the architecture to be in compliance with Chapter four point two of the Architectural and Site Design Manual, except that metal siding is a permitted primary material so long as the eastern facade facing Robb Street is enhanced with secondary materials such as stone and brick veneer. The building materials proposed include manufactured stone at the base, ribbed metal panels, and steel architectural accents. The east facade is subject to transparency and material requirements because it does face Robb, and the west facade does not face any public street or public space and is therefore exempt from material and transparency requirements, which is why this facade is primarily metal. This is the north and south elevations. Steel ribs protrude out from the east facade facing Robb Street to add visual interest, and a stone base is carried to all three sides that are visible from Robb. Saff finds the proposed architecture meets the standards of the Architectural and Site Design Manual as well as the ODP. Since Wheat Ridge is not a full-service city, we sent the application on referral to outside agencies as well as completed our internal review. We did not receive objections from outside agencies, and coordination with these districts is ongoing. Before the hearing, the property was posted for fifteen days, and letters were sent to property owners and tenants within a six-hundred-foot radius. The case was also published in the newspaper, and this presentation was available to view on Wheat Ridge Speaks' website. We received one comment on Wheat Ridge Speaks related to the anticipated noise level of machinery. I will let the applicant elaborate on their operations, but from a city perspective, noise levels are regulated by the city's nuisance ordinance and subject to enforcement should noise become an issue. And with that, Saff finds that the SDP is consistent with the intent and purpose of a planned development. The SDP is consistent with the outline development plan and city code, and all agencies can serve the property. So ultimately, Saff is recommending approval with conditions as listed in the staff report. This concludes my presentation, and myself and Rocky McSalk are here from Engineering, in case you have questions, and the applicant will be presenting as well. Thank you.
Thank you. So would the applicant like to come on up and say a few words? Please state your name and your address for the record. Would you get to the podium? Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is CJ Kirst. I'm with Tahoe Consulting, fifty-seven thirty East Otero Avenue, Suite two hundred, Centennial, Colorado, eight zero one one two.
Thank you.
I'm here tonight representing the applicant, Rocky Mountain Hardwood Processing. Rocky Mountain Hardwood Processing is a small company. The company services tree removals with a zero-waste philosophy. The owner's goal when buying and developing this property was similar to many small businesses, to obtain more space and allow their company to grow. Both owners, one of which is in the audience tonight, have been in the tree trimming, removal, planting, and reuse business for a number of years, but have simply outgrown their current surroundings. Their plans on-site are to cut large logs into slabs, mill down branches into mulch, as well as eventually using this material to produce live edge boards. In addition, they plan to be able to provide replacement trees to their customers that have their existing trees removed, and therefore, they will have a nursery on the property. The official development plan created three planning areas on the property. The special development plan being presented here tonight proposes to develop Planning Area One into an approximate five thousand square foot office, workshop, and retail building. Site access will be off of Robb Street with onsite parking for cars and bikes, as well as a detention pond and Robb Street improvements, such as new curb, gutter, sidewalk, and landscaping. The existing fencing along the northern edge of Planning Area One from Robb Street to the Swadley ditch west will be maintained, and additional privacy fencing will be installed immediately north of the parking lot and the building. The same privacy fencing will be installed along the entire southern property line for all three planning areas with this site development plan. The Wadsworth ditch was recently constructed to be underground in piping versus open ditch, whereas the Swadley ditch will remain open. Detention pond will be built behind the building, and all non-hardscaped areas will either be landscaped or seeded for native grass. The five thousand square foot building architecture was selected due to its simplicity and functionality. The steel building will be painted fox gray with storefront entry as well as two shop garage doors. All doors, storefront, and metal roof will be painted black. A cultured stone wainscote will run along the northeast and south building elevations. There are numerous windows on all four building elevations, with some containing awnings above. The indoor building clear span height of eighteen feet will allow a flexible indoor business operation in a shopper area. The office space will provide the business with administrative and retail functionality. The office space will consist of approximately two thousand seventy-three square feet, while the shop area will consist of two thousand nine hundred sixty-seven square feet. The parking lot provides twelve spaces, with one of these being handicap accessible. The building exterior and parking lot will be lit with wall-mounted LED lights, and two pole-mounted LED lights will be in the parking lot, all downlit with shielding to prevent spillage off-site. One of the ODP intents was to create a variety of land uses that would not burden or harm the wildlife or residential existence. The existing vegetation surrounding the Swadley ditch in Planning Area Two and the far west end of the property in Planning Area Three will remain undisturbed in an effort to minimize disturbance to wildlife as well as provide buffering to our neighbors to the west and north. Uses of Planning Area Two and Three will be consistent with the ODP and will not include any structures without a SDP amendment, which is not anticipated in the near future. Some of these uses will include a landscape nursery, plantings, and storage. We appreciate the cooperation of staff and are excited to move on to the next step of development. I'm here for questions, as well as one of the owners, Sean Infeld. Happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Do we have anybody from the public to speak, either in the council chamber or on Zoom?
There might be on Zoom. If you are on Zoom and wish to speak, please raise your hand. Looks like I have one. Uh, let's see. Oh, there you go. Okay, Mr. Eric Dewey, if you-
Dewey, yes, ma'am.
Dewey, perfect. Is the spelling D U W E?
Correct.
Perfect. Can I get your address, please?
Eight-two-one-five Eagle View Drive, Littleton, eight zero one-two-five.
Okay, and just so you know, you will have three minutes to speak.
Yes, ma'am.
You can go ahead.
Hello, I'm here today representing Earth Science Systems LLC, a business that's been in Wheat Ridge for just over two decades. We are currently in our building immediately to the south of this property at one-one-four-eight-five West I seventy Frontage Road. So we abut directly to this parcel on the south side, where the L-shaped building that shows up in basically all of your images you've shown. We're in the process of relocating just catty corner across Robb Street. So by the time any of this proposed development would occur, we will be immediately adjacent across Robb Street on the east side. And so again, as I said, our business has been here in Wheat Ridge for just over twenty years and is very much on the grow, and we're continuing to expand our business into office space right across the road. The noise is the concern. That's the big worry, is that taking this space and adding into it woodworking and then obviously the material handling and machinery that's going to be involved in all of the, you know, again, the material handling. I imagine there's going to be loaders and other heavy equipment operating across this space, as well as, of course, the wood shop. I know that the first presenter from the city stated that that's addressed by the nuisance laws, but of course, the concern is that it's just going to kind of get pushed through and that this space will be, change its use and become very loud, very noisy with our new office space having just the buffer of Robb Street and our current office space having no buffer whatsoever and adding that noise. And I guess we don't want to enter into a situation where we're continually complaining to the city about noise nuisance, and then I can just imagine the back and forth that may or may not happen there. And we want to just, I guess, really address that upfront. How is that measured? How is that controlled? And what is the standard there, and how do we know that it's going to fall within that in changing the use of that space?
Thank you. Would the applicant or staff like to address this again, because you mentioned it once that it was based on code nuisance? Please state your name and your address for the record as well.
I'll quickly chime in, though, with what the noise ordinance does check for, and we have a noise decibel level of sixty-five decibels is the maximum for a commercial property that you can get to, which is basically the noise level of a conversation between the two of us, and code enforcement would be able to act on that. I'll let Sean-
Is that measured at, my name is Sean Infeld, one-seventy-one South Wadsworth Boulevard, Lakewood. I am-
Can you pull the mic a little bit closer to you? Thanks.
Indigo Mary Frank, E L D as in dog, Infeld. Is that measured at a distance, or is it measured like five feet from a piece of equipment? Because obviously-
It's measured from the property line, I believe, but I would have to double check that.
I think there's a little bit of misunderstanding of what we do. As far as a tree company, we come to the property in the morning. We load up the trucks. We go to customers' properties. We trim the trees. We grind the stumps. We grab the logs. So the equipment is fired up in the morning and leaves the property generally. There are opportunities to cut wood on the property and process wood on the property. We do have a sawmill between Bill and myself. That's the other owner, Bill Tillopaw. The sawmill is currently about sixty feet from his office, and it doesn't disrupt anything, so it's not that loud. And it honestly doesn't get used that often. The whole thing with the ODP and the SDP, the ODP originally was anything we could think of we wanted to do on this property, we kind of talked about. And the live-edge slabs was definitely a thing we wanted to do at some point. But with his tree business and my business, we've grown so much that the slab part of it is not growing even remotely close to what we had anticipated. I think we've sold two slabs in the last three years that we've had the sawmill, so it's definitely not a priority. So that's definitely not going to be a daily occurrence. And the other big one that we eventually will get at is the mulch processing, which we grind limbs and mulch into a mulch product that we can sell. Even if we get into that at some point, it's probably going to be a day of grinding, which is a front-end loader on the property. We don't own a front-end loader, so it's not going to be on the property every day. It'll be a front-end loader and a tub grinder for a day, and that will happen maybe three or four times a year when things are, if that ever gets to a point where it's super busy. But again, that is much like all the other things that we, you know, anticipated when we started this project are way off in the distance. We don't anticipate doing that in years. But that's, when it does get to the point where we start processing things, that's the bulk of what we will do. Is it's a few times a year that we'll process it. Once it's processed, it's stored in bulk, and then we, you know, as part of the retail side, is we can sell the mulch. Again, this is just something we anticipate that we can hope we can do, but there's an investment in equipment that neither one of us is going to attempt at this point, because that's probably a half a million dollars in equipment to get that going. And after this endeavor, that's definitely off in the distance. So as far as a daily basis, like I said, most of our work is off-site, once the trucks go off, and take care of customers' properties. That's where we're at. That's where the crews are at most of the time.
Thank you.
Yep.
So now we'll move on to commission questions. Commissioner Leo, any comments, questions? Commissioner Greavy? Questions? Comments?
No questions or comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Larson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This will be in the form of a question. I'll save comments for later. First, a question for Steph. When we rezoned this, why was it not zoned industrial as opposed to commercial?
I think it's mostly because of the retail aspects of it, and it does not comprise of our highest intensity industrial uses like you'll find in industrial employment. All of the uses that were approved in the outline development plan came from our commercial zone districts. zone districts.
Okay, that makes sense. Then looking at, and I believe Wheat Ridge's noise regulations are based on the state of Colorado. And when I looked that up today, it said sound levels of noise radiating from a property line at a distance of twenty-five feet or more from the property line in excess of the decibel levels. And commercial from seven AM to seven PM is sixty dB, which is fairly low. And then at night, it goes down to fifty-five.
So ours is a little bit different from the state requirements. It's in section sixteen-one-oh-three, unreasonable noise is the ordinance. But it's basically at property line and then from the neighboring property line is where like code enforcement would go and take the sound meter out there and measure it from where the person is complaining from, that property line. And it is sixty-five decibels is the highest for commercial uses during the daytime and then sixty decibels is the nighttime allowance.
Yeah, it's property line to property line.
Okay, so if there's a complaint, then the inspector would stand where?
They would probably stand right at their property line and then at the neighboring property line to hear it from there, too.
Okay, thank you. The, just from my information, there was mention about the property was administratively replatted. From what to what?
It's currently unplatted, so to be able to develop anything, they're just plating it as one lot, which is running concurrently with this specific development plan approval.
That answers that question, thank you. When I visited the site over the weekend, I noticed that the adjacent property to the north is a, there's a fairly steep grade with the fence along, kind of along the top. Is there any, any discussion about possibly reinforcing that? Is there any concern that that fairly steep slope might come loose or something like that in a rainstorm?
If you'd like to. They are proposing some landscaping over there, so they will be reestablishing grade to some extent, but they're leaving the slope as is, I don't know if you.
You'll have to come up here if you're going to speak. I'd like to keep it one person or the others answering the questions, so stay up here if you're going to stay.
Sorry, yeah, I didn't know I'd be involved again. So what you saw is we've actually added soil to that because the slope was like beyond a one-to-one on that hill. So we've actually added it to decrease it because we have to plant plants on it and they would not have made it on the other slope. So we've addressed that to the best of our ability. It's actually the neighbor's fence and we've helped kind of shore that up to some degree already because the wind has taken a panel out already. But the slope was ridiculous and we've kind of addressed that to some degree, so it's not nearly as bad as it was.
So by landscaping, the slope will strengthen it?
It'll, yes, it'll strengthen the slope. Are you worried about the slope washing away?
Yes.
Yeah, that's the whole point of some of the plants we have over there is it's pretty heavily planted along that edge if I remember correctly. And that's, the plants we chose was to kind of reinforce the slope because it is so steep.
The other concern that I have is that the neighbor's property has a driveway that is right there on the fence. And I'm not sure exactly what happens on their property because it's private, so I wasn't able to look. But if you stand on the street, you can see heavier, not heavy equipment, but trucks and cars that are stored there and apparently come through there on a, I believe it's a gravel driveway. Is there concern that traffic going back and forth on that private drive might loosen things up in terms of the reinforcement?
You know, we've been there for three years and I don't know how long the fence has been there. And other than a windstorm knocking a single panel down, we have had not any issues. And that was with the grade, steeper than what it is now. We've had no washout issues, we've had no, nothing. And we've had, obviously, this year was incredibly wet year and we had no runoff on that hill from his property. That was one of the few spots we didn't have any runoff. So we've had no issues from that spot at all. I know he's got a Bobcat up there, I think, and a truck. And that's the swaddly ditch easement. He's actually on the easement with his equipment. But we've had no problems.
Then as you go from east to west along that slope, it kind of curves in a little bit, but it's still, you know, fairly steep all the way back. And if I read correctly.
Mr. Larson, I need to ask, is this really germane to the approval of this, the slope and landscaping?
Yeah, it's really pertaining to the civil construction drawings, which are close to approval. So they're being reviewed by staff for this slope.
Okay, I do have another question.
Go ahead.
Tell me about drainage. I was doing my best to understand the way the runoff will flow. You've got runoff coming off this, the hill on the street, and you've got runoff from your impervious parking lot. And then you're building a detention ditch. Kind of walk me through how, when water hits over here, it's going to get from here to there.
So what we've got on the, we've got two issues that we're dealing with. Obviously, the property has runoff and that, all the runoff from the property is directed into detention pond. From the parking lot around the building goes around the building into concrete swales and it goes into the detention pond. So the entire property is directed into the detention pond. We've also got to deal with water off of Robb Street because there's no infrastructure for stormwater. So we've worked with engineering, civil, Rocky, on designing the best-case scenario we could come up with as far as taking the water into a special diversion off of Robb Street. There's actually a cut in the curb that allows the water to come onto our property and percolate into a special pit so that we can actually pull the water off of Robb Street so it doesn't just sit there and it just percolates. So far, what we've done is we've actually, there was a mound of cattails at one point at that low spot. We've eradicated that trying to get the water off of Robb Street because when we bought the property, even in the wintertime, you'd have a pond sitting in that location. And even with the rains we've had this year, it, all of Robb Street comes onto our property and goes into the little swale we have, which is less than the detention pond we're going to have. And it dissipates within three days at the worst. It's off the road in a day, no matter how full it gets. And if it gets full enough currently, it'll crest over the top of Robb Street and go across the street through the parking lot and their drain pan and into their detention ponds. If it does overflow, it goes into a detention pond the other side. But we do pick up everything on Robb Street on the west half of Robb.
So it flows into the area around the detention pond and then, I'm sorry, the outflow from there is what?
So the detention pond is built to take the property water and then there's a grade change from the backside of the building on the west edge of the building, that southwest corner. It goes from the detention pond to the east across the face of the building towards Robb Street. Is that accurate?
So basically, you're working with the public works and staff to take care of the drainage?
Correct.
Thank you.
That does answer my question and that is all I have right now. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Quinn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just went up to the property as well and I noticed some seepage from the ditch. And I'm sure you've seen that up there. And it just, it has probably nothing to do with this, but I just want to make sure you don't throw a lot of money at this and then that's going to swell up and cause damage to your building and asphalt and everything like that. I don't know, I think it's probably a ditch company's problem, but it's going to be yours, probably.
So there's two ditches. There's the Wadsworth ditch, which we have sleeved, and there's the Swaddly ditch, which is the open ditch. And there's a different level of involvement between the Wadsworth and the Swaddly. Wadsworth is, they are on top of, they have a lawyer, they're on top of their stuff. They know what they want, they know how they want it done. Swaddly, on the other hand, is, they're a little hands-off. I don't think that ditch has been maintained for a lot of years. So we are, I called Pete and, you know, asked him to try to address this and he has suggested things for me to try. We have tried adding soil, compacting it. And I was actually out there today with an excavator, digging six feet down in front of the ditch to find out where it's coming from and actually have addressed it and we'll see if it holds. So we're not too concerned about it. I, you know, I don't ever see Swaddly getting sleeved, but you don't know what they're going to do. But we have addressed, there was probably five spots along the ditch that were either low or seeping through. We've addressed all of them except for this one. And it's, this one was almost done and then it just came out of nowhere and like in the last two weeks and started going across the property. So obviously, we're going to try to minimize any leakage from that because it just harasses with everything that we're trying to do on the property. So we're going to be proactive. And Swaddly has been great about allowing us, allowing me to deal with the issues and address them because we have. So they're pretty comfortable and I checked with Pete on what I'm doing to make sure they're okay with it. We don't go into the ditch, obviously, but that's worked out pretty well so far. So we're trying to be proactive and take care of it.
Any other questions, Mr. Quinn? Questions on this side? Ending? Staff, did you want to make any final comments before I close the public hearing?
Nope, I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Want to close the public hearing and a motion's in order.
Mr. Chair, I move to recommend approval of case WZ-two-two-zero-seven. Request for approval of a specific development plan on property zoned planned commercial development located at four-eight-seven-seven Robb Street for the following reasons. The specific development plan is consistent with the intent and purpose of a planned development as stated in section two-six-three-zero-one of the city code. The specific development plan is consistent with the intent and purpose of the outlined development plan. Number three, the proposed uses are consistent with those approved by the outlined development plan. Number four, all responding agencies have indicated they can serve the property with improvements installed at the developer's expense. And number five, the specific development plan is in substantial compliance with the applicable standards set forth in the outlined development plan and with the city's adopted codes and policies with the following conditions. Any development not shown on this SDP or any modification to this SDP shall require an amendment consistent with section two-six-three-zero-seven of the municipal code. The technical corrections requested by planning and engineering related to labels, notes, and typos shall be addressed prior to SDP recording and prior to issuance of any building permit. Number three, prior to commencing construction, civil construction drawings shall be approved and appropriate permits shall be obtained. And number four, building permit submittals shall be consistent with the SDP.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion for approval seconded by Commissioner Greavy. Comments, questions before we poll the commission? Please poll the commission.
Motion approved, five to zero.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is seven B. Commissioner Quinn?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to introduce case number ZO-A-two-three-one-zero and ordinance amending Article Eight of Chapter Twenty-Six of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning the city's billboard regulations and making conforming amendments therewith.
Thank you. I'm going to open the public hearing and move on to a staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, commissioners. I'd like to enter the staff report into the record as written. The item tonight is, as you mentioned, pertaining to the billboard regulations. And so I'm not going to spend too much time. I think the staff report was fairly thorough with the history, but I did want to just kind of give you a high level on the history on billboards within the city and then some of the, a couple of the more pertinent points in here so that if you do have any questions, we can talk about it here in a little bit. So before nineteen ninety-one, the city didn't have any billboard regulations. In nineteen ninety-one, ordinance eight-sixty established two billboard districts, A and B, and those outside the districts were amortized and phased out, which left the city with sixteen billboards. In two thousand and five, there was a lottery process by a city policy essentially to fill the billboard vacancies and that policy was codified in two thousand and sixteen. And then since two thousand and sixteen, there have been no further amendments to the billboard code. There has been, there were two vacancies and you'll note the history in the staff memo. One open vacancy has been sitting for quite a few years despite efforts to fill it. And so staff brought to the city council in a study session some of the recommendations. And one of the thoughts that we had in the beginning that staff had was to lower the number to fifteen from sixteen billboards because we could not get that one open vacancy filled. Council in their study session suggested that we look into reducing the number of billboards as they are abandoned. And so in consultation with the city attorney's office, this code has been prepared for you. For the abandonment, just so that it's clear, there are three different ways a billboard could be abandoned. A formal abandonment by the owner, basically telling us we're going to abandon this billboard. The second way that it could be abandoned is through non-maintenance or safety issues and those would follow a structured and, a structured process with proper notification, et cetera. And then the sign owner would have adequate opportunities to correct any maintenance or safety issues before the billboard was considered fully abandoned. And then the third way would be removal of the billboard without following the temporary removal process, which is further outlined in the billboard regulations. So this repeal and reenactment, we thought, would be the best way to approach this because there were so many various changes that we're proposing. And so just for the highlights, there are eight or nine of these. It basically removes the process for vacancies. It reduces the number of billboards as they are abandoned. It provides clear language on what constitutes an abandonment. It provides a clear process for maintenance that could result in a billboard being abandoned. It establishes a maximum distance of two-hundred-and-fifty feet from the highway because right now we don't have any signs farther than that from the highway. It prohibits electronic message boards, which we call changeable copy signs, so those electronic signs as billboards. And then it cleans up and clarifies some of the code language and it amends the official zoning map for the billboards, the billboard zoning map, to only have one billboard zone, which is resulting, it was the previous billboard area B. And so staff is recommending that the planning commission recommend approval of the revised billboard code language. And I am happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. There's no applicant, obviously. Do we have anybody to speak from the public on this before we go on to commissioners?
If you are on Zoom and you'd like to speak, please raise your hand. Nobody at this time.
Nobody? I'll move to my left. Commissioner Quinn, any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This won't have any effect on the one that's going through the system, will it? The one that's in front of the court?
No.
Okay.
Separate process via the courts.
Thank you.
Commissioner Larson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The ordinance is pretty clear on the maximum size that a billboard can be. Is there a minimum size to be considered a billboard?
It does have to be, I can't remember what the exact code language says, but it should be, there's not a minimum size to answer your question in the short answer. I think if it's not legible, there wouldn't be any point to having one, but.
Well, the reason I ask the question is that the commercial stretch along I-70 between Kipling and Ward, there are a number of signs. And I'm not able to differentiate between what's a billboard. I can, you know, those are pretty easy to tell, but there are a number of size, size signs that kind of along that stretch in front of businesses and there's even a one with the changeable message on it. How do these kind of get classified?
Those would fall under our sign code, which is a separate, the sign code encompasses the billboard regulations, but the sign codes are for private property owners to have a sign for their business. Some of those signs that you're seeing may be legal non-conforming because they were in place before certain regulations and the sign code went into effect. I don't have that information right off at my fingertips, but a lot of those signs that you see there along there are business signs on private property, not classified as billboards.
All right, okay. The staff report mentions that. The staff report mentions that billboards provide no revenue to the city and do not usually advertise for local businesses. As a result, staff has recommended the billboard code be repealed. What was overlooked in that discussion is the fact that the, the billboard company pays to lease the space from the property owner, the person that owns that, that land. They pay a monthly lease, and then typically they pay a percentage of the revenue that that sign generates. So the person that owns the land is, has an income, and they pay taxes on that income. So to say that the city has no, provides, it provides no revenue to the city, I think, isn't quite, really, quite really on the money. And I'd, I'd be concerned that if we're proceeding on this sort of basis of providing no revenue to the city is, is not accurate. The, tha- that point in itself kind of leads me to at least state at this point that I think the, the poli, the city's policy to reduce the number of billboards around the city is, is the wrong way to go.
Thank you. Questions or comments on, Mr. Gravy? Commissioner Gravy?
I, I don't, I guess one clarification, and just for the record, it's, it's Commissioner Gravy.
Gravy?
Yeah. It's an unusual one.
That's easier to remember.
Yeah, that's right. But just to clarify the last point that Commissioner Larson made about the city's policy to eliminate billboards, I forget exactly how it was phrased. Would it be more accurate to say that it's to allow them to be decommissioned once they're abandoned? In, in the sense that if they're actively pursued by somebody and seen as useful, then they won't necessarily be decommissioned, but if, like the one you've been trying to fill, it's become a burden to actually keep it in use, then in that case, they'll be more easily abandoned and thus decommissioned. Is that, is that accurate?
Yeah, that's, that's absolutely accurate. There's no intent underlying this to reduce the number of billboards through anything else other than a voluntary abandonment, non-maintenance, or removal without notifying us. And so it's, it's rare, a- as you can imagine, for billboards to, a- as long as they're active and they're healthy structural signs that aren't going to blow down or something like that, it, they're, it's, to your point, it is good revenue probably for that property owner. The, the city doesn't have a fee on those or, or anything, and so I think that the, going to your point about in, revenue to the city, I think that that's more toward, we're not collecting some kind of special tax like we do on other types of uses sometimes on the billboards. It's more of a private property transit, transaction between the property owner, the, the underlying landowner, and the billboard sign company that erects the billboard and then the money that transfers hands when an advertiser goes onto that billboard. So you are absolutely correct, Commissioner Gravy, that that is, that is basically what, what you stated about reducing them. You used the word decommissioned, we're using the word abandoned, but essentially the same thing.
Any other questions? I just had one, you know, back in 1907, was, I was on city council, and we used to argue for hours about the lottery system for these billboards. Any reason why those are going away, that lottery system?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Well, the lottery system that, you know, you, for the billboards, it says it's eliminating the lottery system to pick a billboard?
Correct.
And like I said, we argued about that for hours and hours about whether that should be done or not. So why is it going away? Is it, is because they're, they're going to be eventually decommissioned, all of them? Is that what the goal is?
Well, there, yes. If, if one becomes abandoned by removal or non-maintenance, or they voluntarily remove it, there would not be an opportunity to replace the billboard in that approximate location. So we wouldn't hold the lottery process to refill it because we've literally been trying to fill this one billboard vacancy for close to a decade now. And so because of the other sites that are possibilities, constraints, other things, CDOT, there's also regulations through the state for the billboards that they have to meet. And so through a combination of all of these things that are causing these constraints, it's just been very difficult, if not impossible, at this point to get even that one filled. So...
And so is the goal that there won't be any new locations either?
Correct.
Got you. I understand. It was just a long time ago. Thanks. Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Quinn?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, thanks. If they sell the property the billboard is on, it can still, it like transfers?
That would be a private property decision between the land seller and the sign company and whatever those provisions say in their agreement.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yep.
Commissioner Gravy, do you have any more questions?
No, Mr. Chair, I do not. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to close the public hearing and a motion's in order.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move to recommend approval of the proposed ordinance amending Article 7 of Chapter 26 of the Wheat Ridge Code, Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning the city's billboard regulations.
Is there a second?
Second.
You have a motion for approval seconded by Commissioner Leo. Please poll the commission.
Motion approved, four to one.
Thank you. If the commission doesn't mind, I'd like to go directly to the resolution of bylaws so we can get this taken care of because it, there may be some questions, and it's really kind of a, I'm sure everybody wants to go home, and you've been talking about it, or at another location, weren't you, tonight?
Yes, Commission Chair, I was just at Sustainable Wheat Ridge, passing bylaws through their committee.
Okay, so my question would be is, in the interest of time, if you can maybe, if the commission doesn't mind, just summarize what the changes are and have any questions after you summarize the changes. I think this, council already approved this, correct?
Yes, council has approved code amendments, and as a result of council approving those code amendments, that's why we're hearing from the planning commission tonight to adopt bylaws that conform with those code amendments and make a couple over, a couple more minor changes. But I can run through those real quickly. So in ordinance number 1777, which council approved on October 9th, it established term limits of two, three-year terms for all of our boards and commissions. These term limits will be consecutive, which means that after a, you've been term limited and three years goes by, then you could serve on that board or commission again. These term limits only apply to serving on one commission, so you could become term limited on the planning commission and then immediately join the Parks and Recreation Commission, for example. And we'll be using the routing approach to determine if a midterm appointment is a full term or no term. So if we appoint you in the middle of the term and you're appointed to serve a length that is 50% or more of a standard term, that'll be a full term. If less than 50%, that'll be no term. This ordinance also establishes that the city council can remove board members at their discretion or for violation of the code of ethics, which is attached in your packet tonight. And it also redefines what an excused absence is. So absences will now be excused if you give the staff liaison to your committee and the chair a seven-day notice that you won't be able to attend in addition to illness and emergency and all the things that currently exist. Unexcused absences will result in automatic removal if you have two unexcused absences in a 365-day period. However, the commission can vote to reinstate you after you've been removed. These bylaws also change the month of your election to April to align with other boards and commissions and clarify that the chair is to be elected on a rotating basis, which means that they cannot succeed themselves. That is all of the changes to your bylaws that we have to present to you tonight. We're looking for a recommendation to adopt these. Thank you for the opportunity. I'll hand the meeting back over to the chair.
Thank you. That was perfect. Commissioner Leo, any questions?
No, I don't have any questions. I was just, I'm a little surprised that there is so much interest in serving on the boards more every time there's an unchangeable schedule for a council meeting. So where did that come from?
Yeah, we've actually seen quite a few people applying to our boards and commissions opening in recent cycles. Some people applying to multiple boards or commissions at once. We've just recognized that there has been kind of an unprecedented interest in serving on these boards and commissions, to the point where the city is even creating new committees like the Inclusion Diversity Equity and Accessibility Committee, Sustainable Wheat Ridge. But even as we increase the amount of opportunities, we've seen the desire for volunteerism increase even more.
Well, I mean, it's good to hear that they've gotten a chance, because I'm just surprised that, like, I don't have any questions, but this is, um...
Mr. Gravy?
No, no questions or comments from me. I, I think it makes sense.
Thank you. Commissioner Larson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would note that staff may want to go back and look at Article 2 of the, of the bylaws. Under regular commissioner meetings, the first and third Thursday of each month is actually at 6:30 and not 7:00.
Yes, thank you for pointing that out. I just realized that tonight. I think what we're going to do there, if it's all right with the commission, is we're just going to eliminate the date and time of those meetings. That way, if you ever do want to change them in the future, we don't have to go to city council and ask for permission to do so. And then you'll be able to determine the date and time of meetings by majority vote.
Good. And my, the, the second question is on term limits. And just so I'm clear, when you're appointed to a commission, and we're trying to make these uniform across the various commissions and committees that the city, the city hosts, if, if you're appointed to, for example, planning commission, you'll serve two, at the most, two three-year terms. Or is it three two-year terms?
It will be two three-year terms unless there's no one to replace you, at which time you could be appointed to serve an additional at-will term, meaning you could be replaced by a qualified applicant at any time.
At, at the end of your second two-year term, you can apply to remain on, on the commission or the board unless somebody else i- is looking to, for that spot.
Yeah, it's two three-year terms, and if there is no one else to replace you, then city council can reappoint you.
That's great. Thank you.
Commissioner Quinn?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Cole, you do a good job presenting. A friend of mine was here the other night, and he's like, "Wow, that guy does a good job during council," or whatever, just so, but don't let your head get too big. My, my question is, what happens if we vote no on this? We, we were kind of talking about it earlier, and since council had already passed this ordinance, what happens?
Well, then you get to see me again at the next meeting, and we'll have the discussion again.
Oh. Commissioner Leo?
Yes, I'm a little surprised that they don't apply to an excuse absentee. This is a volunteer commitment. This is not a job. And two absences in a 365 days? People are not available. That seems a little strange.
Yeah, if I could just clarify what the definition of an unexcused absence is. So absences are excused as long as you tell the chair and staff liaison seven days in advance of a meeting that you can't attend, or if you have an illness, emergency, or some sort of technological difficulty or force majeure. So it's basically an unexcused absence happens when you don't call and you don't show up.
Oh, okay. Yeah, it just sounds like school or something. I think, I think it's just supposed to be, but yes, I mean, for a, you know, a professional person, you would be lucky enough even to do that, and that's not hard to do. So, no, that was just a little strange to me, but thank you for pointing that out.
I guess the only concern I have is, to me, term limits is when the voters don't vote for you, or the council kicks you off a board when your term is up. So what was the, I don't understand the thought process on term limits for a volunteer position. This came up years ago in 1908. And, and, I'm just kidding. And it didn't go anywhere, but I mean, volunteers are volunteers. Like I said, I understand term limits maybe at the elected level, but at volunteers, either they can be not appointed by the commission, the council again, when their term is up, if there's problems, or they can be kicked off, like it happened in the past too with other boards and commission members. So that's my concern, is that, the term limits. Because I haven't, I mean, there might be interest in being on some of these new committees, but I haven't seen a lot of action on the older established boards and commissions based on what I've watched, just, you know, in the advertisements for these positions. What was council's thought on that as far as term limits go?
Yeah, so in addition to seeing that more interest in serving on our boards and commissions, we also had an opportunity to take a look at the data. We have actually really good records on how long pretty much everyone has served on a board or commission in the city for the last 30 years. And when we took the look at the data, we found that the median length of time that someone served on a board or commission was three years, although the total amount of time that people have served on a board or commission was disproportionately tilted toward people who had served terms of more than nine years in length. So just to break that down, what we found was that because of a lack of term limits, a very small percentage of persons had had a very large impact on the advice that the commissions give to city council and on the quasi-judicial decisions that they make.
So what happened tonight if somebody amended, made an amendment, said three, three two-year ter, or three three-year terms as the, the bylaws for the planning commission? Would, that, that's a come back to council or come back to us next meeting?
Yeah, so...
Maybe I could, sorry to interrupt, and I've been, this is Jerry Dahl, the city attorney, and I've, I've been delighted to just listen and have someone in the form of Cole.
You're coming out of the sky, Mr. Dahl.
Yes, yeah, that's, that's great, isn't it? I will say that the, the term limit rule is effectively, that is something council has, has adopted, so that's code now. And so while what is, in part, what you're seeing tonight are some things in these bylaws that just harmonize your bylaws with what is now in the code of laws, because the city council has done this by ordinance. And some of the other, some, some of the matters in this set of bylaws are, are exclusively for you to decide, like the business about meetings. But the, the term limits is something council made the policy choice to, to create by ordinance. So an inconsistent bylaw by the commission would not, would be preempted by that code section.
And so, Mr. Dahl, what would happen if tonight the commission said no to the changes in, in general?
Well, you, you would be, the best way to interpret it, good question, would be the bylaws that you have that are not in conflict with these, the, the changes the council made in code would still, would still be effective. The bylaws that the commission would have that are, that are in conflict with city code just wouldn't be, wouldn't be enforceable by the, by the commission.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm, I'm trying to make a, I think, a reasonable distinction between the, the code sections that the council amended having to do with terms, pretty important, you know, policy decision for the council to make, and they, in their wisdom, have done so. For things that are more procedural in front of the commission, like your meetings, meeting times, things like that, that was not in the council's ordinance. So it's something that, that is kind of a procedural rule that is something the commission has full authority over.
Thank you.
Yep.
Bruce Almighty.
Thanks for letting me, me zoom in. You're, you're very kind to let me interrupt. I'm, I'm sorry. I know, I know I'm not on the screen, and so it probably came as kind of a shock, and hopefully not an unpleasant one.
What would Harvey Specter say about that?
I, 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 I do not know.
Thank you, Mr. Dahl.
Yep.
Do we have any other questions or comments for staff or for... Do we have any other questions or comments for staff or for Mr. Dahl?
One thing over here, oh, go ahead. Mr. Gravy.
Commissioner Gravy?
Thank you. Was there any, what was the conversation around the at-will component? I mean, I understand that, I mean, I really appreciated the conversation, you know, the, you're informing us about, you know, being a data-informed decision and this kind of thing. And, you know, I think that folks having a disproportionate amount of input because they've served many, many terms and have kind of thrown off the data for the median, I think that makes sense to try to address that. To some extent, though, there's probably some advantage for those folks to be knowledgeable and to provide that input. But my question is more about, is there any, was there discussion around the at-will process to being replaced complicating, you know, administratively in terms of if someone, if there's nobody to replace them and they want to have a third term, you know, both the fact that that person's serving has no idea of when that will end, and also, you know, it seems like this is an effort to harmonize, which would include when to open, you know, the application period, but then you'll have those at-will moments where you'll have to do that kind of one at a time. So was that a concern at all? Did you consider just giving them a third term rather than being replaced at any moment?
Yeah, we did consider just giving them a third term. We also considered that after you would be term limited, that you would serve terms that would be in increments of one years at a time afterward. I think ultimately the reason why we settled on at-will was because if there was an interested person, we wanted to be able to get them involved as soon as possible. Also, we heard from some people who had served on boards or commissions for a long time that they had reached points that sometimes where they would have been more than happy to step down if there was someone who was able and willing to replace them. And I think that at-will status kind of is a harmony of both of those desires there.
I had a quick question on top of that one. So in the current code, it used to say if a position was open and nobody had applied from that district, somebody else could fill that from a different district and they had the full three years. Is that at-will, has that gone away and the at-will has replaced it, or can a District Three person replace a District Two person and they have it for three years?
So to be able to fill an at-will position, you would have to be a qualified applicant, which would mean that you would have to reside in the district of the seat that you would be occupying.
How about the old code? If that's been gone, that allowed a person from a district, different district to serve, did that come out of this code change?
No. So if you leave a district, you are still not able to serve in that district seat?
Well, no, maybe I'm not making it clear that, say a District Three position is vacant and nobody applies from District Three, and then they used to be able to pick other applicants from different districts to fill that spot temporarily?
Yes, that is still the case.
That's still the case. And that, do they get a three-year term as well?
Yes, that is, that is, well, in most of those cases, they are filling terms that are shorter than three years, but yes, they get a full term.
Okay.
And they are treated as a full applicant, not an at-will position.
Right, okay. Thank you. Mr. Commissioner Larson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Oh, this is more of a, sort of an advisory or some advice, is that number three in Article 2 is study sessions, and it describes conductor purpose of discussion of procedures, comprehensive plan or code drafts. We have a couple of things coming up. We've got a revised major planning document coming up. I would like to think that this isn't something that lands in our front porch on a Friday, and we have only a couple of days to discuss. Issues like that, I think, require more than one meeting, and a study session would be appropriate. In my time on the commission, we've not had a study session on anything. So I think it's, it's an opportunity for staff to start thinking in terms of study sessions for planning commissions, so in order for us to sort of get a better feel for what's going on, a better understanding of some of the fairly complex things that go on.
Thank you. If there's no other questions, a motion is in order. Commissioner Gravy?
I make a motion to waive the requirement to review bylaws amendments twice before adoption and adopt new planning commission bylaws presented by staff.
Is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion, as stated in the packet, seconded by Commissioner Quinn. Please poll the commission.
Motion approved, three to two.
We'll go on to old business. Are we on new business? Let me whip these out. Oh, no old business, or upcoming dates, 9A.
Yeah, so, let's see here. Your next meeting date is November 2nd, and we are anticipating having a meeting that date, so please do let us know in advance if you cannot make it, or let us know if you fall ill or something like that. On November 16th, the meeting following that, we are unsure whether or not we will have a meeting on that date, but we will let you know as soon as possible. And then, just a reminder, if you have any travel plans that get close to some of the holidays, for instance, I believe we've got a meeting on December 21st that's on calendar, but it's getting rather close to the holidays, so just let us know.
Yeah, it is on the calendar, but it is close.
Yep. And then I also wanted to mention that we do have, and she wasn't able to make it here tonight, but one of these evenings, we will bring her to the meeting and have her introduce herself, our new senior planner, Ella Stevie, who took Jeff Hertz's place over in the community engagement office. She'll be, one of, one of the main things that she'll be doing is helping to manage the comprehensive plan effort, so. And then you met Dan, new commissioner. Just a couple of project and development updates. The, there was a Valvoline, don't have the addresses right in front of me for that one, but CO has been issued on that one. Certificate of Occupancy, sorry for the acronym. The parallel apartments up by the Ward Road Station, the final certificate of occupancy has been issued on those apartments. And at last check last week, we currently have 14 land use applications in review with the city staff, and 27 are with the developer awaiting a resubmital. So just thought you might find that little statistic interesting. Let's see here, on the city plan update, that's the comprehensive plan, I wanted to let you know that we will be doing interviews on Monday for two of the candidates who submitted proposals pursuant to the RFP. And so that's just moving along per the schedule. And then I also wanted to mention that we also have an RFP, well, it had an RFP open for the sustainability plan, in case you were curious, and that actually closed last week, and there's also two finalists selected for an interview, I believe it's next Wednesday. And there were three total candidates for the sustainability plan and six total for the comprehensive plan. So those are all the updates that I have on my list, but I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Questions for staff? So we'll move on to commissioners' matters. Does anybody have anything to discuss or bring up? Commissioner Leo?
No.
Commissioner Gravy? Any, welcome again.
Thank you. Nothing to add, except just that I, I'm honored to be part of the commission.
And you're District Two?
That's correct.
And you live in District Two?
That's right, as well, yes. I think I'm fully legit.
Thank you. Commissioner Larson?
Nothing tonight, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yeah, real quick, thank you, Mr. Chairman. First and foremost, I want to wish everybody a happy, safe Halloween. If anyone's, you know, drive safe around, all the kids, it's dark earlier and earlier till daylight savings time, so be safe. And I hope everyone realizes there's a ballot drop-off here at the city hall, and do like I did on the way in and drop it off. Please vote. It's kind of a light ballot, but nonetheless, it's very important. There's some good things to vote on with HH and 2J and two city council districts. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for all the staff presentations tonight, I appreciate it. We appreciate it. Public appreciates it. And we'll take a motion to adjourn?
A motion to adjourn?
Is there a second?
I second that, Mr. Chair.
There's a motion to adjourn, seconded by Commissioner Quinn. Please poll the commission.
Motion approved, five to zero.